Ladies and gentlemen, the cameras are rolling, the microphones are on. Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting, Committee of the Whole Meeting, and Special Committee of the Whole Meeting. We begin our City Council meeting with the roll call. We kindly ask our clerk to please take the roll.
Bowring?
Here.
Bruno? Ruby? Kilburg?
Present.
Kocarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashki?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
And we begin our City Council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we're going to ask our Superintendent of Water, Bob Van Gescam, to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Superintendent. Folks, Item 4, Amendments to the Agenda, are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the Omnibus Agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council. Those items can be enacted with one motion. Is there such a motion? Alderperson Swanson makes the motion. Alderperson Kocarog makes the second. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, the Omnibus Agenda has been approved by this council. We jump to Item Number 10, Municipal Bills for Payment, and we kindly ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Expenditures total $4,537,222.03.
Who's going to try to do the Bruno-ese? Alderperson Bowring?
Sure. I move that we... Oh, man, I've not paid attention to this enough. That we pay the bills, the individual amounts which add up to the amount stated in the packet, the individual items which are listed in the packet.
As stated by Alderperson Bowring, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Marx. Any questions regarding the bills? If not, the clerk will take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The bills have been approved with a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent. We jump to Item 11, Committee of the Whole Items of Business. There is one, Item 11A, Consider Ordinance Number 2023-13, restating Title IX Municipal Utilities, Chapter 2 Municipal Electric Service, Article B Service Rates and Charges, Section 5 Table of Electric Rates of the Geneva City Code. Is there a motion to put this on the floor? Alderperson Bowring makes the motion. Alderperson Marx makes the second. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay. So presentations and discussions regarding the electric utility were held with the Committee of the Whole on January 9th, 2023, July 3rd, 2023, and July 24th, 2023. The Committee of the Whole recommended an increase in the customer charge and a rate structure that eliminates block rates and institutes a single rate per kilowatt hour for the energy charge. As recommended, the new rates would take effect November 2023, and the... All that information is in the packet. And with us this evening, we have Superintendent Holton, if you have any additional questions, and Director Babica.
Yes, questions from the dais for either Director Babica, Superintendent Holton, or City Administrator Dawkins. The floor is open. Alderperson Swanson.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things I wanted to do tonight as a former business owner was to make the City Council aware of the impact that some of the criteria we have for electric rates, how it impacts small businesses. And that has to do with the movement of general service to medium general service. Going when a company... When a meter goes above 25 kilowatt hours in demand charges for 15 minutes in a particular billing period, there are significant upcharges to those small businesses. And the... I realize there should be... There needs to be a cutoff. The cutoff is 25 kilowatt hours to 400, and I just wanted to make the council aware that there are about 10 to 20 customers that flip between general service and medium general service on a regular basis, and when they do so, their monthly bill can skyrocket. Just an example, my employer, the bill for the last three months was $110, $14, and $714. And the $714 bill was actually for less power used than the $100 bill two months previous. And that's just because of the demand charge. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm not saying it needs to be changed, and I just wanted to make them aware that there is this upcharge and small businesses are being impacted. If we want to grow them, and as they're growing and using more electric power, we should be aware that there are significant monthly changes to their electric bills that could be smoothed out in a different fashion. So that's all I wanted to make a statement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the dais? Alderperson Kocarog?
I guess I just wanted to state maybe for the record that I am interested in reevaluating this when we can figure out the new meters and time of day usage. I really think that might be a more progressive way to go and encourage efficiency at the same time. So I understand that wasn't practical this time, but I would definitely be interested in hearing more about that when those meters are either available or cost-effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there's no one else, we do have a motion by Bowring, a second by Marx. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Item 11A, under Committee of the Whole Items of Business, has been adopted by this council with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two absent. We jump to Item 12, Presentation of Ordinances and Resolutions. 12A is to consider ordinance number 2023-14, amending Title IV, Chapter 2, Section 4-2-13, license fees and number of licenses, adding one Class B III liquor license, which is a restaurant with a cocktail bar, for first watch at 1702 Commons Drive. Is there a motion? Alderperson Mayor makes the motion. Alderperson Marx makes the second. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so the mayor said most of it, so there was an application for a Class B III liquor license, which is a restaurant with cocktail lounge, for first watch, which is located in Geneva Commons, which was formerly the Clatter Restaurant. The license issuance work will occur after final inspections have been successfully performed by the city's building and safety teams and contingent on satisfactory results of a background check on the individuals listed on the application. I'm not sure, do we have the applicant here this evening, or a representative? Nope, doesn't look like that. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, but that's about all I know.
Any questions for the City Administrator?
I will say we had first watch in Kansas, so I think you'll like it once it does open, so.
If not, a roll call vote would be appropriate. Madam Clerk?
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, the Class B III liquor license has been approved for first watch. Item 12B, Consider Resolution Number 2023-78, authorizing the issuance of a certificate of completion for the Traxler Residential Lots. Is there a motion? Alderperson Mayor makes the motion. Second by Alderperson Pashki. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so this is the certificate of completion for the following public improvements to accommodate the development, which are the demolition, the paving curb and gutter, signage, and the storm sewer utility. With the certificate of completion, the corresponding letter of credit supplied by the developer of the Traxler Residential Lots may be reduced to $111,389.92, which would hold back enough money to complete the outstanding and incomplete items and also the retainage needed for the warranty period. And I would note, there were some questions earlier today on this item that are all also posted on the website, talking about which items are not included in the certificate of completion, which are things like the earthwork and site preparation and erosion control. Those things still need to be evaluated and submitted for completion. With that, we do have Director Babica with us this evening, if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dawkins. Any questions for Director Babica? Alderperson Kocarog?
Yes, I did find... I appreciate whoever submitted those questions, because I did find it a little confusing that we're doing a certificate of completion at the same time that things are not complete. I understand the public part that you explained and the answers, but is this normal procedure to call it complete when it's not?
Well, we're calling just those items complete. That's why it lists exactly what we're referring to. This happens all the time. The reason we do this is so that we can return money that we don't need to be holding on for a longer period of time than that...
Okay.
...than what is necessary.
Okay.
And then after the year warranty is up, then you would have a certificate of acceptance.
Oh, sure, okay, maybe that's...
Which is accepting all of the public improvements.
The completion and the acceptance. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, the issuance of a certificate of completion as stated by the City Administrator for the items she enumerated has been approved. Item 12C, Consider Resolution Number 2023-79, Rejecting Bids for Water Treatment Plant Cartridge Filter Purchase. Is there a motion? Alderperson Pashki makes the motion. Alderperson Bowring makes the second. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so with the increased demand in water usage this summer, we've had to use more cartridge filters at the wastewater treat... At the water treatment plant, sorry. As a result, a formal bid notice was prepared for the purchase of these filters for the remainder of fiscal year '24. Bids were opened on July 31st, and only two bids were received, and the price per filter quoted in the bids were significantly higher than the quotes that we've been obtained just by requesting three competitive proposals directly from the vendors on an as-needed basis. So therefore, the recommendation is to reject the submitted bids, and then we would continue to purchase cartridge filters as they're needed on an as-needed basis, and we would follow those rules, which are that we have to procure three quotes, which can be through phone, through a competitive source well type of contract, or email, or anything like that. So we do have Superintendent Van Gescam with us to answer any questions, and also Director Babica.
From the dais, any questions for the Superintendent or the Director? If not, there were a flurry of questions provided and answers provided as well, so thank you. Madam Clerk, please take the roll. This is to reject the bids.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, the bids for the water treatment plant cartridge filter purchase have been rejected by this council. We jump to Item 13, folks, Public Comment. This is new language on our agenda, so it's worth reading. When recognized by the Chair, proceed to the podium, state your name for the record, and provide your public comment. Please understand, this is your time to be heard and the public body's time to listen. No discussion or debate will follow. Anyone with us this evening? Any public comment? Yes, sir. Mr. Rule, good evening, sir.
Jay Rule, I'm sure you all know me by now. Since a few of you were missing the last meeting, I wanted to just back up just a little bit. When I left here, one of my last comments was that before we get public with this, that I was going to give you an opportunity to meet with me once again, and I also said that you didn't have to say anything, but I did need somebody from Stedelijk there. I never received a response from anybody, so I'm assuming that's a no. Is it a no?
I can only recite the language that's used under the public comment processes that we follow.
Right, okay.
This is our chance to listen to you, so...
Pardon me?
This is our chance to listen to you.
Okay, so, but am I going to get a response?
The matter before you, sir, is being handled by our city attorney and our Assistant City Administrator.
Okay, so they're here. Am I going to get a response? If not, I guess I continue, okay? So I'm assuming this is a no.
All we ask is that your comments be obviously relevant, and I know last time you spoke at great length, and we have, of course, that all that captured in the minutes as well as the videos, so if brevity is an opportunity, we will welcome it very much.
So anyway, so I did ask for this meeting. You've given me no response. I really don't know what you people are afraid of. I really don't. But be that as it may, my last FOIA request was for all communications relating to this matter up to the date I submitted it. It yielded over 280 documents. 280 documents that somebody had to research, somebody had to study, somebody had to release. I just want everybody to think about the financial resources that are going into this. As a taxpayer, this concerns me. There was also some emails and statements in there. One of them by Mr. McGreevy to Ms. Freeman, it said about a plethora of FOIA requests. I've made nine requests. I don't know if that's a plethora or not, but there's a plethora in my pocket, okay? So this is just the beginning. If we can't move on. Another statement in there that Ms. McGreevy made to Ms. Freeman was that "I have continued to make... threaten legal." On two occasions, one with Mr. McGreevy on December 8th, I said I was trying to avoid On an email to you, Mr. Mayor, let's see, what date was that? On the... On May 15th, I made the same statement. I'm trying to avoid litigation. I've never once said I'd retain an attorney, not once. I met with Mr. McGreevy on December 8th, '22, to discuss this for the first time. He sat there and listened to my story. He asked me if I'd filled out an Insta-report, which I'd had, and what I found out was, you knew all along I had. You knew it on December 5th, because you got an email from Ms. Freeman denying my claim. You even knew I'd... The claim was going to be denied on the 5th, yet you said nothing. You said nothing. I would have at least had intestinal fortitude to say something. Ms. Freeman, she keeps hanging her hat on an act of God, and I did ask her to define that. Her answer is, and this is a quote, "Anything where there's no human interaction." Well, the tree didn't come up volunteer, some humans planted it. City crews trimmed that tree twice. Human interaction. For 40 years, a tree was subject to city snowplows and road salt being thrown at it. Human interactions. So I don't think that holds a lot of water. On top of that, about a month before this incident happened, we had a hailstorm come through our neighborhood, ruined about probably most of the roofs. I think 80% of them have been replaced. They're still working on that. Act of God, guess who's paying for it? Their insurance. Yet your insurance refuses to reimburse me for your tree falling on my house. I don't quite understand it. Do they have a different God? Something different? I don't know. Never sees it too amazing. Ms. Freeman made her determination from her desk in, I believe, Dallas, Texas, based on six questions that she asked Nate Landers. Question number one, does the city own and maintain this tree? Answer, the tree is located on the public right-of-way, so he does maintain the tree. Question two, have there been any reports of the tree in question being a hazard? Answer is no. But I've got to qualify that by saying it was inspected five years ago. What caused the tree or limb to fall? There were 50 mile an hour winds in the area. That was based on a generic National Weather Service forecast. It could have been 50 mile an hour wind out in the open plains, but I'm sure it wasn't there. And on top of that, the tree had been healthy. It wouldn't have gone down. What type of maintenance was performed on the tree? I'll reiterate here. Five-year tree trimming program and individual tree request by residents. The tree was trimmed and inspected on a five-year program. The resident requested a trim in July of '17, and a third-party performed citywide tree inventory inspection on 2018, again, five years ago. This is the one that really peppered the gumbo. This is a two-part question. Does the insured have an arborist, and what was their opinion of the tree? Answer's the first part, yes. You're telling me the city had an arborist, and you couldn't send them one over there to look at that? Even today? Second part of the answer was, tree was removed. I didn't even know what that means. Tree was down, they cut it up and hauled it off. Again, you have an arborist, and you couldn't... You couldn't send him over to look at this? You could still come over and look at the root, part of the root structure, didn't do it. You know what I call that? Plausible deniability. I think that's what most politicians call it. I call it irresponsible. I call it not acting in good faith. I remind you, I don't know if all of you know this or not, but the tree roots from this tree heaved this adjacent sidewalk. That sidewalk was just recently repaired. Contractor dug up several roots, which are dead and rotten, which I have collected and have in my garage. I have the hard evidence. So we've got pictures, we've got hard evidence. I don't know what else you need. Just to reiterate here, city crews paid to clean up the downed tree. You paid a contractor to come and repair a tree in my yard from this incident. You paid a contractor to repair the sidewalk, yet you won't pay for my repairs? Something's rotten here, guys. This case is so full of holes, I just... I just... I can't... I can't believe you guys could sit there and deny this claim. And just sit there stone-faced like that. This is wrong. It is absolutely wrong. The last thing I want to say is, Mr. Mayor, last meeting, Mr. Kilburg wanted to ask me a question, and you shushed him because you didn't want it to be a debatable issue. You didn't even know what the question was. I'm going to tell you what the question was. He asked me if I'd gone to my insurance carrier. That's all he wanted to know. Now, I haven't gone to my insurance carrier, because this falls on the city. I have a $1,000 deductible. Am I supposed to just eat that? And I'm not going to. You guys can continue to spend time and waste financial resources fighting this. And all we have to do is sit down and hash this out. Pretty simple. Does anybody have any non-debatable questions that they'd like to ask me? I guess we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
New business? Anyone from the dais? Any new business they'd like to share with the council and the community? If not, happy to entertain a motion to adjourn the City Council meeting. Alderperson Kocarog makes that motion. All in favor of adjourning the City Council meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. There'll be just a brief transition to the Committee of the Whole Meeting. Microphones are off.
I would like to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, August 7th, to order. I am Robert Swanson. I represent the Fifth Ward, along with Alderman Maladra. And for the record, we have eight of the 10 alderpersons here. We are missing Alderperson Ruby and Alderperson Bruno. Item 2 is to recommend suspending the rules to permit Alderperson Swanson to chair this meeting and to vote on all action items on this agenda. Is there such a motion? Alderman Maladra is second. Oh, Alderperson Bowring. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion has passed. Item number 3 is to approve the Special Committee of the Whole minutes from July 17, 2023. Is there such a motion? Alderperson Pashki?
Second.
And second Alderperson Mayor. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to the Items of Business. Item 4A, Consider Draft Resolution Authorizing the City Administrator to Enter Into a Contract with Ogni Group in the Amount of $486,153, and Allow the City Administrator to Approve Up To $48,615.30 in Change Orders for a Total Not To Exceed Amount of $534,768.30 for Water Plant HVAC Rehabilitation and Modernization. Is there such a motion? Moved by Alderperson Mayor, seconded by Alderperson Bowring. Stephanie, please.
So on May 1st, 2023, the City Council rejected bids for the HVAC project at the water treatment plant, and directed staff to revise specifications and conduct a new bid letting. The project was rebid, and five bids were received with the low bid submitted by Ogni Group out of Wooddale, Illinois. For additional... There was a bunch of questions that we posted to the website earlier today, so if you still have more questions, we do have with us this evening Superintendent Van Gescam, and then Ed Colina with Engineering Solutions Team.
Does anyone have any questions?
I've got really a question, but maybe, Bob, you could just remind us where we're at and where we're going with this, if we approve the new contract? Like what the problems are, where you're seeing the impact in the water treatment plant?
In general, the entire front of the administration building, actually, the entire administration building at the water plant, does not have air conditioning at all right now, hasn't for approximately a year, because we've been going through the process of putting bid specs together and getting this out to bid. The other problem is upstairs in the control room for the other HVAC equipment and also the VFDs that run the RO units themselves, that needs... That room needs to be cooled. That HVAC system is out. So it's pretty much the entire plant, so.
Gotcha. That's all. Just wanted to review. Thank you.
Alderperson Mayor?
I had one question about the term of the maintenance agreement. It was listed as 6,000, but is that for one year or five years?
Yeah, it's just an annual agreement, and we have not approved that yet. Once the project is complete, the contractor will submit to us a plan for the moderniz... Or, excuse me, a plan for the, um... Maintenance of it, sorry. And then we'll determine if we want to approve that or not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We'll do a roll call on this one.
All right. Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes. Moving on to item 4B, consider draft resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute a professional engineering services agreement with Engineering Solutions at a cost not to exceed $41,600 for Phase III water plant HVAC engineering services. Is there such a motion?
Second.
Moved by Alder Person Bowring, seconded by Marks.
Okay, um, so Engineering Solutions prepared the specifications and the bidding services for the water plant HVAC rehabilitation and modernization project. Phase III engineering services are necessary during construction to ensure specification compliance. The resident project representative for Engineering Solutions will perform oversight of construction activities, review of submittals and shop drawings, review the pay requests, and final inspection and punch list. Um, and again, I still have Superintendent Mangaskam with us, as well as Ed Colina from Engineering Solutions, if you have additional questions.
Alder Person Kilburg?
What's the role of our facilities manager as it relates to the oversight, and, uh, their role as it relates to these last, the last project as well as this one?
I can address that. That question was also asked earlier today and on the website. Currently, our facilities manager is not doing these types of projects. He, he is, um, all encompassed in the facilities master planning project, and he's also not an engineer and doesn't have the skill set to do this type of project, this big of one. He's more responsible for some of the smaller replacements and some of the smaller projects that we have. And so over time, we're gradually integrating him into the city facilities, um, to start taking those types of projects over, but right now, he's really focused on the facilities master plan, and very small projects.
Any other questions? We'll take a roll call on this one as well.
All right. Bowring?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
That brings us to public comment. We have a full house here. Does anyone want to address the, uh, council? If not, uh, we will move to new business. Does anyone at the dais have any new business to discuss? Even better, that brings us to adjournment. Would anyone like to motion to adjourn this meeting? Moved by Marks. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Meeting is concluded. Thank you.